All right, take a... All good? All right, thank you, sorry. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Williams.
President.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega. Councilmember Kraus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford.
Mayor Canning.
Here, thank you very much. Just a note, this meeting is being, even though it is a special session, it is being live televised on Channel 28. I believe it's... On the website streaming, sorry, Channel 28, and it'll also be available on the website at a later date. And because of the conditions which we'll get into in a minute, under the state and county orders, if you are not, are watching at home and would like to participate with any questions, I'm going to make this at the front of the meeting, you can email directly to our city clerk at K as in Kendall, G R A N as in Nancy, U C as in Charlie, C as in Charlie, I, at ci.kalistoga.ca.us, keeping your comments to 250 words or less, and they will be read into the record, and your question will be addressed at that point. With that said, if you can all, if you're able, to please stand and join for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which is one nation, indivisible, indivisible, just as a principle.
Open public comment for any questions or comments by the public for items that are either on the consent calendar, of which we do not have one today, or items that are not on the agenda as presented.
For clarification, during this special meeting, they can only comment on agendized items.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So we'll move on. I'll close public comment, and we'll go into general government. Consideration of a resolution ratifying a proclamation of our local emergency, local emergency novel coronavirus COVID-19 by the city manager acting in his capacity as director of emergency services. The recommended action is adoption of the resolution. And there was a staff report attached prior to addressing this matter. I want to share with you some comments. The city of Kalistoga is supportive of the state and county shelter-at-home orders and will assist with the implementation of those orders. These drastic measures are being taken for the health and safety of our entire community. Adherence to these orders is the responsibility of all of us. Violating the terms and conditions is not only irresponsible, it's disrespectful to your friends and neighbors, but it is now also unlawful. The basic terms and conditions, shelter at home and restrict your contact with those outside of your residence. You may travel out of your home to conduct essential activities, which include going to the grocery store, convenience store, hardware store, gas station, banks and financial institutions, medical facilities, restaurants for takeout only. And as a clarification, takeout only means there's no congregating on the property, and you cannot be served or consume a beverage while waiting for your takeout order to be completed. Our restaurants have been informed of that. So simply put, you can't sit at the bar and wait for your food to be ready. Access to these facilities may be limited at times to maintain compliance with the social distancing requirements of these orders, so that's a minimum of six feet of separation. What is allowed and encouraged is to leave your home if you're able to take a walk, a hike, a bike ride, whatever you are capable of doing to stay active and healthy during this period. If participating in any of these types of activities with others you don't live with, you must maintain a social distance of six feet and must not participate in any group larger than 10 people regardless of the social distance. And all gyms are currently closed, so you can't use your gym. Again, you are not trapped in your household. You can go out and do the activities that you need that are deemed essential, some of which I've outlined. And again, if you are capable and able, get out, take a walk, walk the dog, walk with a neighbor at a nice distance of six feet, or walk next to someone you live with. These are encouraged from that standpoint. City services will remain in place. To be very clear to everyone here and at home, the city of Kalistoga is open for business to serve its residents and its constituents. We are not closed. We have some modified conditions of service. Unfortunately, we cannot receive people at City Hall, but you can call City Hall, you can email, you can take care of business. Obviously, public health and safety are first priority. Police and fire are fully staffed and available. Public Works, which manages our streets, sidewalks, and most importantly, our water and sewer system and wastewater systems, all of that is functioning. Okay? We are not closed, we are here to serve you. Fortunately or unfortunately, this is not our first rodeo as a city dealing with complicated situations. With that said, we will do as we always do as Kalistogans and as Kalistoga, and we will be here to help each other, and as your servants as a city, we will be here to serve you. I want to be very clear about that. We remain in daily contact with other cities, towns, and the county. The county also remains in daily contact with the state public health agency and the CDC as we all work through this. While we will all be impacted by the economic situation, this will no doubt create and already has, our first priority as a city will remain the health and the safety of our residents. Your patience and diligence through this is certainly appreciated, and don't be shy about checking up on your friends and neighbors. You can do it via social media, you could do it via phone, yell out the window, just maintain your safe distance, social distance, and get outside if you can and take a walk. It's going to do wonders for your mental stability. We are on day one. So with that said, we have an order in front of us. What we did do in order to enact some of the terms and conditions we had to is the city manager, which he is authorized to do, created an emergency proclamation or declaration of emergency in which I believe we have seven to 10 days to ratify as a council. Am I close?
Yes.
Okay. And that is the first item that is before us. So with that said, council members, anything you'd like to address on the ratification of the emergency declaration that was signed Monday?
How often do we have to renew this? Is this on 30 days, or seven days, or what?
My previous, good morning, my current city manager, mayor, council members. My previous understanding was that your council would need to necessarily re-declare every council meeting, regularly scheduled council meeting. I was advised yesterday from the city attorney's office that we need to revisit it at least every 60 days. So what your action today would be, should you choose to adopt the resolution and continue the declaration that I signed on Monday at 6:00 PM, it would be good for 60 days from today.
Any other council members with any questions?
I do have a couple of other questions.
To this, to this item?
To this item.
Okay.
In the past, the state has declared disasters, and I believe this is a statewide emergency. And I'm wondering what the difference is between the two, because the consequences appear to be the same, although with a different modality, and whether we are prepared to, and this might spill a little over towards the financial side, but will we be able to access the Stafford Act?
So part of the declaration was to put in place a mechanism for the city to be able to access any state or federal funding that may become available, up to and including the Stafford Act. We have, through the city attorney's office, they included specific language requesting the governor to make available any financial assistance to Kalistoga that it's available to access. So it's a placeholder. I don't know if there is going to be any financial assistance forthcoming, but it allows us to do a reach back at least until Monday on March 16.
Any other questions? Anyone in the public wishing to address this particular matter? All right, with that said, I'll entertain a motion on this item as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Kraus, we have a second by vice mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, carries unanimously. Moving on, item number two, discussion of financial and service delivery impacts associated with the Napa County Shelter-at-Home and now State of California Shelter-at-Home order due to the COVID-19 pandemic and direction to staff on service-level deliveries, programs, and core services. The recommended actions, receive the report and provide direction to the staff. Again, this is, while the council's first order of priority is the public health and safety of our residents in the community, we also have a fiduciary responsibility, and it's under that segment that this discussion is occurring. But again, as I've said in my previous comments, financials aside, our absolute first responsibility is the public health and safety of the community. So with that said, city manager Kern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So things are changing rapidly and on a daily basis. We had a briefing this morning with the county. Things are very much in flux. Last night, the governor made his statewide declaration that is, you know, very broad and expansive in where we, as a state and a community, are going forward. We know for some certainty that right now, the transient occupancy tax is pretty much zero going forward for at least the balance of this month and probably next month. That will have an impact on our projected revenues. So what I'm trying to focus on right now is just that immediacy of that loss of revenue. Gloria and I had some pretty lengthy conversations yesterday about what that initial impact is going to be. We're projecting through the end of April, the loss of revenue is going to be in excess of a half a million dollars. So that kind of puts it in a broad nutshell of what the impact is. Recognizing that, you know, a significant portion of our general fund is derived from TOT, it's something that we need to be mindful as we move through the budget deliberations and discussions. Right now, we're maintaining all of our operations as the mayor indicated. Primary focus is health and well-being of the community. Police, fire, fully staffed and fully operational. Public Works, fully staffed, fully operational, with emphasis on service deliverability for our utilities. So water and wastewater is not going to be impacted. Our offices are closed for face-to-face contact, but we are open for phone and email business transactions. We have seen a dramatic reduction in, you know, our communication with the public. We understand and respect that, you know, there is a significant amount of concern and trepidation in the community. But for right now, we are doing what we need to do to maintain business and keep the city fully functional and operational. My request or my suggestion is that we recognize and understand those issues going forward, and as we move into the goal-setting session and the budget deliberations, that you as a council be thinking about what ultimately are the core functions and services that we're going to be delivering. I don't see that this is going to correct itself overnight, but I don't want to be overly, I don't want to overthink it and take it one day at a time. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Council members, questions on the report to this point?
I would, I would think that...
Do you have your mic on, Gary? Just because...
It is.
At home, okay.
I'm just maintaining six feet from it. I would guess that you would have staff curtail any unnecessary expenditures at this point.
I've given that direction, that it's a need versus a want. So needs only, wants go in the parking lot.
And then I would say there's probably three different financial scenarios. What we have in front of us right now, getting worse, and then even worse. When I was a kid, I'd call it worser. But I think that it's going to be at least a year before things get back to anywhere close to being normal. So I would, would think that the council will be interested in hearing about what our reserves are, what our reduced revenues are, which I know you're already working on, but also how it is we're going to cope with things as they continue to get worse. I would also recognize that within our labor contracts, that we have certain language in there about the city's loss of revenue for just such an event as this. Perhaps it would be a good idea to reach out to the labor organizations and see what their thoughts are on how they will react, or how they will help with the situation kind of thing. There may be some changes in hours that need to be made. There, you know, there's, there's a lot of things there, but I think the sooner that we get labor involved, the better success we're going to have in maintaining our workforce as well as the service that we provide. Majority of our expenses in the city, other than capital projects, is labor.
Understood, and we will begin those discussions as appropriate.
Other council members, any questions?
I'd like to reiterate or...
Do you have your mic? Can you turn on your mic down, sorry?
Yeah, it's on. I agree with councilmember Kraus. I also was thinking about whether the situation would trigger those clauses in the labor contract, at least to look at them and, and see, you know, if those triggers are becoming appropriate. And then I also am thinking about the request from one of the spa owners. I think the council saw that about forbearing, I think is the term, the TOT payment, which may be minimal anyway. That's not on the agenda exactly, but...
I was going to address that in a minute.
Yeah. So that's, keeping money in the hands of the, of the public, I think is important, too, you know, at a time when the public may not be, a lot of people are not working. So I'd like to hear what the council says about the delaying the collection of TOT, which means we'd be dipping farther into our reserves, and I also am interested in how accessible our savings account is so that we can draw on that for the short term, understanding that we can't go without revenue and keep spending in the same way for the longer term.
So if your council will recall, there are three components of the TOT. 12% that inures to the city, so that's our cut. 2% goes to the Napa Valley Tourism District, and 1% is assigned for the affordable housing component. The request that we received was for a deferral, if you will, of payment for January and Feb, February?
February and March.
February and March.
January's already been made.
So we would, we would suggest, or I would suggest or recommend that if your council is inclined, that we would allow for a 60-day deferral. So February's wouldn't be due for 60 days. April would be 60 days out. So it's, we're already, we already collected 30 days in arrears as it is, so this would be a 30-day basically extension.
It would actually be 60 days plus from what it is due.
Okay, so it's 90 days is what the ultimate collection would be. The caveat would be that the 2% that inures to the tourism industry and the 1% that goes to affordable housing would still be due and payable on the normal schedule, because those really aren't our funds, if you will. So it's, it's basically a 12% deferral of the TOT. In conversations with the other city managers yesterday and this morning, some are on board with that. Because your council is meeting today, we are on the forefront of having that conversation, but it feels like they would be supportive of a 60-day extension.
I participated in a meeting yesterday with the four other mayors and the chair for the Board of Supervisors for Napa County, and this conversation obviously did come up, and other communities are going to enact a similar, and my recommendation would be that we defer the February and March payment for 60 days for TOT. It is not a forgiveness or an abatement, it is a deferral.
And at the same time, I can hear the public saying, okay, the, some businesses are getting deferral, what about when the water bills come due?
That was my, that was going to be my next topic.
Okay, so we're on the same page then, and, and I, I think, since we have money in the bank, that I think that the deferrals will be appropriate, even in the case of the public at large, for say, the water in the short term. In the long term, we have to come to terms with, with this, and I would consider it a deferral, but not a forgiveness in general.
There's a nuance there that I'll discuss in a second, relative to the water and sewer. So, sure. You know, let's, you want to manage the TOT first?
I have a comment on that. Well, my, I guess my issue is, or concern is, it just creates maybe not confusion, but isn't it just easier to delay the whole payment for the 60 days and as opposed to split it up, the 2%, 1% and the...
We're not authorized to, we're the authorizing, authorized collection agent of the 2%, but it's not our authority that it's being collected under, so we can't defer that. That would have to be under the TID, so that we can't do. And on the 1%, which is the housing allowance, it goes to a separate, separate purpose, separate... So 12%, which is the lion's share, that is our TOT currently, right? Base TOT would certainly give a lot of...
So to clarify what the mayor just said, we have discretion over 13%, we don't have discretion over the 2%.
And my recommendation is we still collect the 1% because of its purpose to housing, which was created as a separate TOT draw.
Now, I guess I have a question about, in the case of the, of the lodgings, is another case, you know, the people pay their, pay their bill when they leave, and it's not really my business how they handle their bookkeeping internally, but since we're talking about a deferral, if that money already has in fact been collected by the businesses, then, and it has to go to the city anyway, why not just send it, you know, why consider a deferral if the money's already been collected anyway?
It's, you know, it kind of comes back to your comment earlier. It's just a cash flow thing, you know, everybody's running their business with assumptions, you know, that business is as usual. So yes, businesses have collected the money that was collected, you know, for last month, but now business has come to nonexistence. So, you know, they're making choices, you know, do we keep this staff member? You know, there's only so many dollars in the bank, so they're making decisions on how to conserve their cash so that they can float themselves through this period of time. I know with sales tax, it's the same application, so you can file with the state of California an extension on that payment without penalty or interest. So there's just a paperwork process to do that. I think it's, you know, it's like a 90-day extension or something. So I almost think the 60 days might not be long enough, because I think we're going to be in this, if they can't afford, you know, to pay the TOT today, they're not going to be that much better off in 60 days, but we can always revisit it, I guess, if we wanted to.
So I'm going to be okay with it. You know, the hospitality community is an important part of our community, and I'm going to be okay with deferral. I was going to say for the shorter time, I guess, for the 60 period, 60 days.
Some may just elect to pay it, because they don't, they have the reserves.
Get it out of the books, yeah.
Yeah, they just want to keep going as usual, but I'm just thinking there are others that...
And then, and so basically, they'd be using the money they would send to the city for TOT, they'll be using for internal needs to keep a few more people working perhaps, or whatever other, whatever other important things are coming up in this dire time.
Yeah. It also allows them a bridge of time to apply for some of the emergency funding that's available through the SBA, the SBDC, the federal government, where they're, and we've received multiple requests from different properties on this, and it's the short term, it's going to be a long-term impact, obviously, but the short-term gap is where their concern is. And I would say that this action, should we choose to give direction to staff on this, would be consistent with what other, other communities have done, and certainly as the vice mayor mentioned, would be consistent with what the state is offering on deferral of sales tax.
Speaking along those lines and a little bit about what Don talked about, about water and sewer rates, I know that PG&E is not turning off electricity.
Sorry, just one quick question. Can we, let's settle the TOT issue, and then we'll go, because they're, they're, they're very different mechanisms, so. Anyone else at the council, before I open it to the public, on giving direction on TOT to staff? The recommendation would be a 60-day deferral on the February and March payments. The April payment will be back on schedule, so Gloria, are we, so if your February payment was due at the end of March, it's now due 60 days later, and then rolling forward for March as well. Obviously, the collections we're going to have for April, May, and June will be far less, so we'll, we'll get, let those go back on the schedule. So council's comfortable with that, before I open it to the public? That's what we're considering? Okay. Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? Okay, from a, yes, sir, please.
Excuse me, Dave Ross, is it only the hotels that are impacted by this, or is it also restaurants?
So ref...
The scope of this, please.
Yep, so TOT is only collected by hotels, transient occupancy tax, and then sales tax, which restaurants collect. The state is allowing them a mechanism to defer the payment of their sales tax as well. That's outside of our jurisdiction. Sure. All right, so direction-wise, anyone else in the public, sorry? We'll close that. Direction-wise, you're clear, Gloria and Michael?
Absolutely.
Okay. And again, to the vice mayor's point, if someone wants to make their payment on time, they're welcome to do so. If we can go to water and sewer for a second, because obviously that's important as well, this did come up, I know, with the city managers, and it also came up at the mayor's meeting. Because we run an enterprise fund, and an enterprise is, is a public utility operated by the agency, which is the city, and because it is a ratepayer concept, deferral or abatement creates a different series of problems or complications, but... creates a different series of problems or complications, but I'll let Mike explain what actions we've taken so that residents who are also going to be cash-challenged have some sort of opportunity or option. So, Mike, please.
So, the first thing that we've done is we've implemented a, we've put in suspension the late fee, so if you can't pay your bill, we're not going to assess you a late charge. We are also looking internally at a non-shut-off policy, that if you don't pay your bill, we're not going to shut off your water. Now, we can only do that for so long under state law, and in fact, at your next regularly-scheduled council meeting, we will be bringing forward a shut-off policy that is consistent with the news, with a new state law that was passed in January. And that basically says that we have to give constructive notice on multiple occasions, so two written notices, a phone call, before we can shut off your water, and there is a fairly lengthy extended period of time for you to correct the deficiency, up to, what is it, 60 days, Gloria? So, it's a 60-day period. So, we're going to pretend that you have already adopted that policy, because we have to, by law, follow that procedure, it's just, it hasn't gotten to you yet. So, that is already in, we'll consider that to be in effect.
So, just, and again, to be consistent with what some other enterprise funds, public utilities are doing in the other part of the valley, is if you, there will be no penalties, there'll be no shut-off, there'll be no interest on penalties during this emergency declaration period. So, if you are unable to make your payment, the end result will not be shut off of your water or sewer. Questions from council on that?
Can the residents make payment arrangements with the...
Certainly. And if, if there's a situation where someone isn't able to pay their bill in its entirety, and they want to try and set up a payment plan, that's something that we can discuss with them individually. I know that there are, you know, some assistance programs from up Valley Center that we would encourage people to reach out to. I think that's it for right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good policy, to suspend that late, you know, that allows the public, which may be cash-challenged right now, that cash flow, that allows the public to hold on to those dollars and repay it when possible, so I agree with that, I thank you for that.
And if we need to get more aggressive in what the policy is, such as, you know, a longer-term repayment program, if we see that there's a need for that, we'll bring it back to your council for direction.
All right, anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? All right, without that, that's another, that's direction from the council staff, are you clear on that?
We are.
Gloria, implementation of this? All right, thank you very much. Any other items you'd like to address of a financial nature under item number two?
So, council member...
That you need direction on, sorry.
Council member Williams asked a question on, you know, how fluid are we in our cash flow within our LEAF account, which, so we have a checking account, which is our day-to-day financial activity. We also have a LEAF account, which is basically our savings account, that's where the bulk of the general fund reserve is housed. We are able to access that on a 24-hour notice capability, and within that account, it's approximately 6.5 million, 11 million in cash, so...
That's in combined checking and LEAF account?
Correct.
A total.
So, our ability to manage our day-to-day financial obligations is solid, and I don't foresee, you know, significant impediments moving forward. We do, you as a council will need to be mindful, though, going forward, that recognizing that the tourism industry is not going to be what it used to be, or as robust as it was, going forward for the next handful of months, that revenue stream is not going to be there.
I feel compelled to mention the fact that we are in a very fortunate situation, considering the size of our reserve, which was accrued based upon sacrifices made by this community, decisions made by this community to allow responsible development to occur. If it were not for that to have happened, we certainly would, we are in a far better situation in other similar communities, so with that said, we need to be very prudent moving forward, and as we enter into the budgeting process, which was already scheduled to start, we need to bear all of this in mind. We will be receiving and have received some information, but we'll bring it forward on economic projections moving forward, based upon, while there has never been a similar situation or identical in terms of the impact of COVID-19, there are, there is history, 9/11, the economic downturn, there is history of impact to cities' economic situations and projecting forward, which will obviously be used in educating decisions we're going to make about our next fiscal year budget.
I would also like to remind the council and the community that it was a combined effort, so it was an all hands on deck to get there, including compromises that the city staff made.
That's, that was what I meant, what I said, sacrifices made by all parties. Thank you. Council members, any questions or further direction? Do we have any questions from the public emailed in yet?
Not on this item.